I believe that is going to be much better. All right. Again, welcome, everybody. It is November 23rd, 2020, 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. The governor of Iowa has declared a public emergency because of the COVID-19 outbreak. The mayor has determined that an in-person meeting of the city council is impossible or impractical without violating the governor's mandates. When an in-person meeting is impossible or impractical, Iowa Code Section 21.8 permits a governmental body to conduct a meeting by electronic means. The meeting will be conducted by video conference using Zoom from the council chambers. The mayor and the necessary city staff will be in the council chambers. Seven council members will not be in the chambers, but will participate via Zoom conferencing. The audio/video conference of the meeting will be broadcast in normal public access channels. We will strive to maintain the quality of the video and the audio during that broadcast. Public access is available through this broadcast. Comments or items that are on the agenda may be made by submitting them prior to the meeting to the city clerk, mayor, or any of the council members, or by calling 319-596-0179 during the meeting. Meeting minutes will still be kept and will include a statement explaining why an in-person meeting was impossible or impractical. Call the meeting to order officially, and item B is the roll call. Carla.
Oh, four.
Here.
Bergen.
Here I am.
Drinkow.
Here.
Glazer.
Here.
Kengas. Rafi.
Here.
Schneider.
Here.
All right. Everyone is here. I also want to welcome back Mr. Blake Yanda for the third and final week of the council meetings. Can you try talking and see if it comes through? You should be able to. I want to see if I can hear you.
Okay, can you hear me?
I can hear you if I need to. Okay. All right. Item C is approval of the agenda as presented. Entertain a motion to do so.
I will move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Drinko. Council discussion, if any. If none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Close the same sign. Motion carries. The agenda is approved. Section D, study session calendar. Item number one is the airport commission update. I see that we have Mr. Hanson with us this evening, probably to deliver that.
There we go. Yes, hello.
And so I think the way we're going to try to get this to work is I have a PowerPoint presentation. And if Bill will let me share my screen, Dennis will then narrate, and he will tell me to go to the next slide or to back up. Sound good?
Sure. I don't have it on my Zoom program, but I got the slide presentation here on my laptop. I can walk along with it.
So I will share my screen now. We'll see if this all works.
Is it up there, Mike?
Aye. So Bill, is it disabled so I can share?
You should be able to share. It's got on. You should be able to share it.
I'm trying. Okay, here we go.
There we go. Okay, so first slide is just the study session for today. Go to the next slide. The meetings at the airport are on the second Thursday of the month at the airport at 7:00 PM. Go to the next slide. On the airport commission is myself, Mike Shear, Eric Bagelmann, Jane Wolenszyn, and Lee Henrichs, and then Chris Blazer is the council liaison, and Mike Cherry, a director of public works. Next slide. Kind of goes over the general duties of the airport that we shall advise the city council on matters pertaining to the operation and development of the airport. Powers and duties of the commission shall include. Next slide. So there's a list of 12 of those duties there, which if we go to the next slide, it kind of gives you a brief view, which is to maintain the airport, budget for the airport, plan for the airport, and promote the airport. So kind of go to the next slide there, which shows over the last, you know, 10, 12 years, the reliance on general fund tax support has decreased from 15, roughly 15 cents, maybe 20 cents per thousand of taxable value down. We're getting down to about 2 cents per thousand dollars of value of property. So we've reduced our overall expenses of the, or expenses of the airport, or and/or increased the revenues of the airport through different manners of, we obtained some property that we rent out that provides some cash flow, and then reduction in expenses. Next slide. The airport manager is Waverly Air Services, which is under contract. Same with the fixed base operator, which is Sweeter Aircraft Services. Both entities are owned and managed by Erv Sweeter. And then we go to the next slide. We have aircraft maintenance by Sweeter Aircraft Services, which is with Erv. You know, there's, and then he's got his son Clinton in there running the avionics department. They've got another mechanic in there. Barb kind of manages the office. If you've been out to the airport since Erv has taken over, you'll notice when you walk in, it's got a very nice feel to it when you walk in, welcoming, clean. They have a lot of snacks out there. I was out there Tuesday. We actually flew up from Minneapolis, and Barb was in there decorating for Christmas. And we picked, we picked her up about six feet of garland to bring back to help decorate. Within the hangar space, you can see there's a picture of a Cessna 340A that he's got the engine broke, broke open on. The airport's been busy with mechanical work, doing a lot of work for customers, avionics work. And as you can see there, you can see the white floor. When Erv moved in there, they resurfaced the whole hangar floor with a white epoxy, and with the new LED lighting system in there, it really pops up. It's very clean out there, both as you walk into the lobbies and the hangar, very clean and very welcoming. So that's a little bit about the management of the different entities out there. I'll go to the next slide. So the aircraft operations, they, business traffic that comes in, flight training, they do have aircraft for rent out there. Agricultural, we have quite a bit of spray flying activity, usually in the latter part of July and August, for spraying our crops around the area. This year, we had four or five spray, different spray operations in there. And then recreation flying, coming and going for just individual flying. I'll go to the next slide. There's a shot of the airport. That fuel tank over there is sentiment relocated over to the other side of the tarmac to the east side. But it gets you a general idea of what the airport looks like out there. Go to the next slide. There's a couple of spray planes, the one on the right, that yellow one, that's a Thrush 402 turbine. And the one on the left is a Dromedor with a radial engine. But a couple of spray planes there in late July, early August spraying crops. Go to the next slide. There's a helicopter in from the air guard down in Waterloo. They come up quite often to practice at the airport. In fact, Tuesday, when we took off, there was one, he was just hovering down at the new end of the runway. So we chatted with him a little bit. So they come up here and do a lot of practicing. They like Waverly for closeness and the ability to hover, and they come up music quite often. Go to the next slide. There's the air ambulance that comes through. They'll come up and get some fuel once in a while, and fly in and out of the Waverly Airport, or the Waverly Hospital. The Waverly Hospital put a new landing pad on the hospital a few years ago. And so we do see that in and out of the Waverly Airport periodically. And then next slide. Young Eagles Program, we've had that out at the airport on a couple of different occasions where we've invited the young, young men and women to come out and learn about flying. It's a half, half-day program where they learn how, a little bit about aeronautics, flying, and then they get to go for a ride, too. And so it's been a very popular program that we've done in the past. Both Waverly, I think, O'Wine, and Waterloo have participated in it. And it's a good way to get kids involved in flying. And up until recently with COVID, there was a big, huge push for needing pilots because a lot of pilots will be retiring out of the airline industry over the next three to five years. So hopefully that comes back after we get COVID figured out with a vaccine. Next slide, please. We have the Lions Club Annual Fly-in Breakfast, which is a big hit out at the airport. This year, we did not have it because of COVID. Hopefully, that will be returning in July of 2021. And next slide will show a picture of how well it was attended. Pretty full house out there, and you can see with the new white floor in there, that looks really nice, with the LED lighting, and you can kind of see up top the new insulation that was put in also. So the hangars are, the hangar there is looking very nice. And we always have a good attendance for the fly-in pancake breakfast. Go to the next slide. These are some of the projects that we've had, that we've completed, going back to 2011. We've put in some fuel tanks, the access road and parking lot construction. 2015, we did a mechanics room insulation project. In 16, we did the runway reconstruction for the 2,800 feet, and then put in LED lighting in the mechanics room. 2016, we did the bulk hangar LED lighting, and then also the hangar installation project, the bulk hangar installation. In 18, and in 18, we hired the new FBO airport managers, manager. Through the past seven years, we've been doing the runway safety zone land acquisition, which we finally got completed. And then in 2020, we did obstruction removal at the end of the runway and on the side of the runway. And then this year, we did credit card fueling, which works really nice. I've used it a couple of times. It's very handy. It now gives customers 24/7 access to fuel out at the airport. So that was a good, good, nice addition for us. We go to the next slide. Ongoing projects, we're just finishing up the runway 29 extension, which added 400 feet to the runway, which I can tell you, thank you. I enjoy the extra 400 feet. It's an extra level of comfort in taking off and landing with 3,200 feet available. I don't know if you recall the picture of that air, that twin-engine airplane in the hangar, that Cessna 340. It now makes that a lot more comfortable for that airplane to get into our airport also. So I think we got a few little punch items left on runway 29 extension, but I think it's pretty much finished. The lights are in, the grading's all done. I believe the FAA may have been in here earlier to shoot some initial approaches to get us upgraded approaches for both runway 29 and 11. Right now, we have a circle-to-land approach, which is about 600 feet for coming out of the clouds, which is a little high with these new approaches that hopefully we'll be getting here soon. There'll be GPS with glide slope approaches, probably down to about 250 feet, which will be nice. That gets you down there pretty low with a precision approach right down the runway, which works pretty nice and will give us better accessibility into the airport in climate weather. Next slide. There's a, oops. Proposed projects, excuse me. We need to look at replacing the security cameras, upgrading the electrical power to the T-hangers and individual hangers. And then a little bit down the road, looking at reconstructing the taxi lanes for the hangers that are becoming pretty broken up with the asphalt. And then 2022, 23, looking at constructing a parallel taxiway. And then in 2023, 24, apron expansion. And then farther out, constructing some additional new T-hangers. Next slide. Kind of shows those projects on the map, where the taxi lanes for reconstruction, the parallel taxiways, those types of things, and the apron expansion where that would go on the map. Go to the next page. Kind of shows you some of the pictures of those taxi lanes, the condition they're in. You can see the cracks in the asphalt, and so there's debris that accumulates that sometimes can get a little bit tougher to maneuver around, or you get rocks flying with the propellers running. And they accumulate water and form ice pockets out there. So something to look at in replacing over the next few years with some FAA funding. Go to the next page. Which kind of gives you an overview picture of the airport and the hangers and the taxiways and the tarmac. And overall, very nice facility. The runways are in very good shape. The extra 400 feet is very nice. I think with Erv and them in there, running the operation, they've done a very nice job. They've cleaned it up for us. Made a very, very nice presentation of introducing people to Waverly as they walk in the front door of the airport, and as they further go into the hangers. It's very clean and well-kept. They're very attentive to the, I believe, to the tenants and to your, our needs. When we need help with anything, they're very good to work with. And I think they're doing a very good job. And next slide is, I think, just the culmination of the presentation. I kind of ran through it, but I would certainly entertain any questions that anybody has or comments.
So just for my remind, you know, my memory. So we have these projects such as the apron expansion or the redoing of these, of the asphalt outside the hangers. What's the funding for that coming from?
That would come from the FAA. They allocate, and Mike, you can correct me if I'm wrong, about $150,000 a year for our airport, for which we can accumulate. And then if we have a large project, we can, like the runways, we can submit that as a separate funding request on a 90/10 basis. Is that correct, Mike?
That's correct. We've also sought state funding, most recently for reconstructing the taxi lanes. This past year, we did not receive funding from the state, but we will submit our application again. In addition to that, we'll also be looking at identifying a project that is eligible for federal funds, and those federal funds cover 90%. If we're close on funding but do not have enough of the appropriation or the entitlement funds set aside, they can fund the remaining balance with a special appropriation. That's what happened with the runway reconstruction and also the runway extension project.
And when you talk about that 90/10 split, that 10%, is that coming out of general funds? Or is that coming out of the operational expenses of the airport? Or where is that coming from?
Typically, that is outside of the airport's general fund, or the airport's budget. It would be a capital improvement project. It would be a capital improvement project.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to thank the, the Airport Commission for the service that they provide, keeping an eye on this asset for the city. I've been happy the last couple of years, having Sweeter manage the airport and be the fixed base operator. They've done, I've been around long enough to know what the difference between the, the other fixed base operator and Sweeter. And it's a world of difference and I really, it really is welcoming. I think Dennis said it best, you know, they, it makes the visitors to Waverly feel like they want to come here. And Irv has taken upon himself to do, you know, in the summertime, he wasn't able to do it this year, but in the summertime, he does monthly barbecues in the bulk hanger and anybody's welcome to come. He'll show a movie and, and just meet some pilots and, you know, it's those kinds of things that make a difference for this city. And I, I think this is, and I've said it before, you know, this is a, this is a gem to have in Waverly. And I think we just need to make sure that we, we manage it right. And I think the Airport Commission's doing a great job.
Dennis, thanks for presenting.
Oh, sure.
What, what has happened with numbers of people flying in and out of there with COVID?
Aviation in general is down, just with COVID and people wanting to not fly, I guess. And talking with Irv, it's, his shop is backed up. They are busier than ever with avionics installations, maintenance on aircraft. So from, from his shop standpoint, they're busier than ever. But in general, I know general aviation is slower for traffic counts, just less people are flying for business. I think people are still going out flying for personal. But I know fuel sales and traffic counts are down, you know, in surrounding airports also, just because, because of COVID. It's better now than what it was back in, you know, April and May. I think some people have gotten back out to do some flying, but it's still less than when it was. I know on the commercial side of things for like airlines, like Waterloo cut back to one flight a day where they had two. And I know like I've been through by the Waterloo Airport out in their parking lot for the American Airlines flights and there's like five cars parked there. You know, it used to have, you know, 100 or so. So it's, it's significantly down. Yeah, so I think it's down, but better than when it was.
Dennis, for, just for clarification or for layperson here, non-pilots, when you talked about the FAA coming and mapping the glide path or the approach in, is that in feet above the ground as far as coming in?
Yep.
So there used to be 600 feet was the approach and now it's down to 250?
Oh, I, I don't know that for sure. That's what I'm guessing on the approach that they'll give us. The previous one was a non-precision one where we flew off of the Waterloo VOR and it kind of put us over the wave of the airport and then we were to circle and land. And so they kept us at 600 feet because it was what's called a non-precision approach.
Okay.
With these new ones, they will line you up probably four miles out, four or six miles out, something like that, and line you up down the runway and bring you in on a glide slope. And you've got basically crosshairs in your airplane on the, on the glide slope that'll bring you right down to the front edge of the runway on a, on a proper glide slope. Usually it's coming in at a three-degree angle downward. And it'll bring you in, if you fly it right, you come down 250 feet, you look up, you should see the runway. If you're still in the clouds, you're like, well, I gotta go back up because the clouds are too low, so you do a go-around. Whereas before, on the circle-to-land, you would come down to 600 feet. If you're still in the clouds, you couldn't land. You, you had to do a go-around and probably go back to Waterloo and land there where they have a, an ILS precision approach, which can get you down to 200 feet.
So does that mean that planes will be coming in lower over the city? Because I know we've had discussions from residents in the neighborhood east of the airport about low-flying aircraft before. Does that mean they're coming in lower or is it kind of not?
They'll have the same glide path, that 3% downward glide path, but they'll be coming from, normally like if I'm landing to the northwest runway, to give you a reference point, I usually turn, turn left at the library and then kind of swing over the Werberg Football Field and then swing in to make my final approach into the runway. And I'm usually about 700 feet as I'm swinging over the library, maybe 800 feet. In this case, with the GPS approaches, you're going to be coming in from probably five miles straight out of the runway, not making those left-hand turns, but coming straight in from five miles out. And so we'll be coming in, as we get closer and closer to the runway, we'll be at the same altitude on that final approach. It'll just be, we'll be coming in over town at, you know, maybe 1,000 feet, 1,500 feet, and then down to, you know, 250 feet at the, at the end of the runway.
Okay.
Dennis, I guess I'm just interested in some of the services that you have out there. Obviously, there's planes and you fly planes, but what, if you can, can you talk to me about some of the businesses and what they do flying in and out? You said there's mechanic services there. What other services or things go on there at the airport?
Sure. So you can, you can take your airplane in there and you can have anything from an annual done, which is a check of your airplane that's required once a year, to if you need major overhauls on engines or retractable gears or props or fuel, you know, replacement of fuel tanks or bodywork. And then they also have avionics department out there, which they can put in a whole, whole new avionics panel for you if you want to do that, you know, which is the latest and greatest avionics with autopilots and GPS and engine mon, digital engine monitoring. They can do all that. They can do interior work. So if you want to have a new interior put in, they can rip out the old one and put a new one in for you. They have all that available inside the bulk hanger. They also, they sell fuel. So if you need fuel now, you can come in and get fuel 24/7 with the credit card machine. Aircraft rental they have there, they've got an airplane out there for rent. If you want instruction, they've got instructors available to give you lessons. If you need to store your plane overnight, let's say you come in in the winter and you don't want your plane sitting out in the cold snowy weather, they can put it in the bulk hanger and keep it warm for you. So overnight hangering. And then they have, you know, monthly hangar rentals that they manage for the airport, for the city. They have a courtesy car there that's available for anybody that flies in and you need to get into town, that's free to use. That's something, I don't know who to talk to. The, the car that they have is, is, it's okay. But in my travels around flying, I see a lot of airports that will, will use an old police car that, you know, has put its time in with the police department and then it's time to replace it. And they will sometimes use that as the courtesy car out at the airport to keep it kind of upgraded. But I didn't know if that was, if that's something that may be an option down the road for replacing the courtesy car out there. But those are some of the things they offer out at the airport.
And I'll just add, Dennis, there's a couple, you mentioned the avionics and a lot of people may not realize that Clint Sweeter's avionics shop is one of just a handful in the state. And, you know, when pilots need to get avionics reworked or they had, you know, at the beginning of 2020, had to get an ADS-B system put in. And so I had to fly all the way out to Council Bluffs because this was previous to Clint having his shop to get that service done. So you have a lot more pilots coming in to have avionics done because they know that Waverly has that service. The other thing I remember happening is to, I don't know, three or four years ago, when Werberg had their NCAA track and field tournament held here, you had quite a few pilots coming in for that event. So when we have local events or we have local things going on, the Waverly Airport gets used quite a bit because it's just closer. It's closer than having to fly into Waterloo, a lot less hassle for, for most pilots, so.
I know we get quite a few people flying in for the horse sale that happens, I think, twice a year for sporting events, for, for Werberg College and for other, for the high schools. We've had people fly in for that. We've seen them out there at the airport, so. And then it'll be interesting to see with the 3,200-foot runway, once that gets published into the FAA, which allows us to take on a little bit, a bigger aircraft, to see if we might get some more charter service flying people into Waverly as opposed to Waterloo with the availability of bringing in light twins now into, into Waverly.
Thank you. You had said something about instructing instructors out there and there was a program for young, young people. Is there, what's the cost to that? And if it's a high cost, is there some type of tuition or something that, for people that maybe are low income or is the thought, there's a lot of people, you don't have a whole lot of pilots right now and a lot of people are retiring, so just kind of a thought for the younger generation?
Yeah, the Young Eagles program is free. So it's no cost to the individual that comes out to spend the day with the Young Eagles program through the FAA. And so, yeah, that's absolutely free. For flight instruction, yeah, there is an hourly charge to, if you're going to go after your pilot's license, there would be hourly charge for the aircraft and also the instructor. But the Young Eagles introductory flight program is free for, for the kids to come out and, and participate in.
I can speak to that. My nephew has been going through flight school as a 17-year-old over at Iowa Falls in anticipation for his tenure at University of Dubuque to then transition over to rotor training for helicopter from the military. So he's over around the Eldora area, so fortunately our airport isn't prime for him, but nonetheless, there are those opportunities out there, so. And I haven't forgot your offer to, to go up one day, Dennis, so.
Okay. Give me a call. I'm always looking for a reason to go.
Me too, so. Anything else from anyone? I appreciate your time this evening, Mr. Hanson, and also thank you, Mr. Anaglaser, for your support with the commission as well.
I would invite anybody on the city council or, or staff, if they ever want to go for a plane ride, please feel free to give me a call and I'd be happy to take you for a ride. We can just go around town and take a look or we can fly and get some food somewhere down to Hank County for Chinese pizza or Ames for barbecue at, oh, what's that restaurant down there? But they got good barbecue, so, yeah, please give me a call and give me an excuse to go.
Yeah, good old Fong's Pizza, so.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much.
Hickory Park.
Hickory Park, yeah.
Mr. Kangas, yes. All right. If there's nothing further, we'll move on to item number two. Or actually, regular business item number one. That's the second item on our agenda this evening anyway. Resolution 20-179, a resolution in support of Governor Reynolds' proclamation regarding COVID-19 dated November 16th, 2020. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of Resolution 20-179, a resolution in support of Governor Reynolds' proclamation regarding COVID-19 dated November 16th, 2020.
Second.
Motion my Breckau, second my Bergen. I enter into council discussion.
Just wondering why we're doing this with the governor's proclamation or how that kind of came about, because we don't really do it with anything else, the governor does.
I can talk to that just a little bit because I'm the, the primary author of this With COVID becoming a real problem in Iowa and also here locally in Bremer County, I thought it was necessary for us to make sure that people understood that there were steps that could be taken to try to keep the number of cases down and, and keep the hospitals from overflowing and the, the staff in the hospitals from wearing out. One of the things that we could do was to basically second what the governor has already proclaimed and encourage people here in Waverly to follow the government's, the governor's proclamation, to know what's in it and, and to follow the proclamation and to express our support for the governor and her attempts to try to get a handle on the, the COVID infestation that we've had. So that, that's why I think it's important that we do this as a city. You know, we are elected government officials and one of our duties is to try to do what we can to keep people here in the city safe. And I think this is one of the actions that we can take.
I can't at all be supportive of the governor's thing. This is horrible. Closing a bar at 10:01 or a restaurant and all of the different stuff and all of her stuff and every two days, the rules change. I'm not going to at all be supportive of that. In fact, we should condemn what the governor has done. It's been horrible.
I would agree with Rod. I think that it doesn't, you don't have to be a physician or I don't know what, to realize that this is a, this is a major problem right now, especially in Bremer County. People, the hospital is managing. The census is down a little bit, or at least it was as of yesterday, but last week, the hospital was full. Area ICUs are filling up, if not full, and this is a serious problem. And I think, with all due respect, I think, Councilman Schneider, your comments are offensive about this because local people have died from this illness. It's a serious problem. And I think that people are looking to us to make recommendations. I've had people ask, you know, what, what is the city doing about this? How does the city council feel about this? And I think that, I think it's important that we attempt to support what the governor has recommended. I actually don't think it goes far enough in some areas, but I think that we at least want to publicly, as elected officials, do what I think is the responsible thing and recommend that people wash their hands, social distance, do not gather, and wear a mask in public. It is not a political issue, in my opinion. It's a public health issue. And I think if we would have done this months ago, we would not be seeing the numbers that we are seeing currently in Bremer County. Most of my patient visits right now in my other job are remote, which is fortunate because a lot of people are in quarantine or isolated, which they should be if they've been exposed, even if they're not severely symptomatic. But this is a major problem and I think that- is a major problem. And I think that we need to be giving citizens the message that it is the best thing you can do for yourself, your neighbor, and your family to take precautions. Do not gather in large groups, wear a mask, wash your hands, use hand sanitizer, and social distance when, whenever it's possible. I think anything but that is irresponsible for us to be telling the citizens of Waverly.
I think that my big concern is where is, I think, public health has not been present enough. And it might, that might not be maybe their doing. I think that they were suppressed early on because of their transparency. And I, we, I wish that public, Bremer County Public Health was on here tonight to talk to us. If we're going to vote on something, where are the health, public health officials, the people that are making these choices, the people that are schooled in this? I want to hear from them. First of all, and I, way back in, it's April 3rd, I did send an email to Ms. Sharp at Bremer County Public Health. Again, it was April 3rd is when I sent an email requesting information, education on this, to help ease some of the rising concerns, to help educate everyone on public health and how people get notified and preventing and mitigation strategies. And that request, unfortunately, was, was denied or declined at that time because they were busy, they said they were busy at the time, which I, I believe. They didn't, they didn't want to put any extra work, they said, by coming and educating us at the council. And they also said that if and when it is needed, that they will hold a Zoom meeting for Bremer County mayors. And I'm not sure if that has happened at them or not. I haven't heard anything. Again, I just feel like public health has not been present enough and in this situation for the education that we need about how to properly wear a mask, how to properly wash your hands, when we should be washing our hands, you know, and the support of, you know, you should stay home if you're sick. There was, she did email back and along with the decline to visit in April, but she did say, we need to focus on prevention, which is social distancing. Don't gather in big groups and wash your hands frequently, covering your cough, stay home when ill, even if you're mildly ill. So my question is, you know, we are, we have, every, seems like every other day, there's a new proclamation. And I feel like unless we're getting on here every single day or every other day to adopt the new one, why are we doing this now? Because I, honestly, I don't even think this is the up-to-date one. And if we had this, I think there's even a newer one than this. I think this is like November 16th. And I think there's actually a newer one proclamation. So this one is already old. So I guess that's my comment and concern about this.
But we're really doing it just to show that we're doing something and that we're, we're in agreement with, with what, what they're doing here. And I think that it's, and first of all, it's wrong and really quite immoral for any council member to say that I'm irresponsible and don't care. And especially if you've listened to anything that I've said all year long, is totally irresponsible. And I think the citizens, a lot of citizens see that. I mean, it's, it's ridiculous. I mean, come on. But, you know, there's, there's, there's plenty of evidence now that shows that all of these COVID actions don't do anything other than make the citizens upset and make people upset. And they end up disrespecting government and disrespecting other people. And it's really quite a sad situation that's taken place. You know, if you look at death rate per capita by state, if we go to, you know, kind of, I guess, freer states like South Dakota, it is a little bit worse than Iowa right now, but it's a virus. This thing kind of floats and pops around. But you have, you know, states with heavy lockdown, Illinois, Wisconsin, those are worse. And, you know, while my mother was dying this spring, I, I had limited visits during that time. So I had time and I had to bounce around. So I would go to Prairie de Sheen and compare, and this was during the heavy lockdown time when everyone was, there were, were not a lot of people out. And I would compare the two states, you know, go to one store and one town and then cross the river. And I ended up becoming quite fascinated with what I was seeing. And I kind of took that study and did the same thing on the ground in the Quad Cities and then also in Fargo-Moorhead, where we've got, you know, both, both of those cities and areas have considerably different COVID policies. But I studied the economics, I started studying economics and started looking at, oh my gosh, this is just terrible. What is going on here? And, but then deeper than that, I started looking at people. And where the, where the COVID policy is heavier, the people are broken. And it's almost more like if you have no COVID policy and, and, and greater COVID policy, the conditions get worse. And it doesn't, it doesn't mean that we can't do this stuff. As a matter of fact, I think that as council people, we should continue to have this out in the public discussion about the proper things we should be doing all of the time. But, but all of these rules, it's creating a lot of disrespect. You know, if council does this, there's going to be probably a restaurant owner who's not going to like this. Or, so we're, you know, why are, I, I don't think that, you know, to say that I don't care because I don't want to close a bar at 10:01, that's, that's really quite insulting to me. So, go ahead and vote for this. But boy, you can, you can face what the citizens will tell you at the ballot box next November. But I really would like to know how we're going to unwind some of this policy. How are we, how are we getting out of it? How did we get into it? We have no measurements. And I agree with Heather, the state has been a wreck on this. I have been calling about the PCR testing and trying to get information there. And honestly, it's like they don't care. I've never seen anything like this. It's really quite bizarre. You know, I'll listen to what, what the other council members have to say here. But this, this whole COVID thing is, is really starting to stink even more. So I, I am going to be, I didn't like it back in February and March, and I like it less even now. And tell me how long we're going to do this because I think it's nuts.
I think we, I, I'm just reading some of this and, and I, what does this do to our, our businesses in Waverly right now? I think this isn't the updated one. The most recent one, I think there was one on the 18th that was updated and it maybe went into more detail about maybe places that you exercise or, you know, I, I know there was some concern. And I can tell you that, you know, there was a lot of concern with my daughter and her dance facility. And they are taking the most precautions that, you know, it's unbelievable. The best precautions you can take is in order to, you know, just keep the kids going to dance, try to have some type of normalcy. But they're still, they are safe there, you know, with social distancing, they're wearing a mask, a hand hygiene. They, I, I'm scared that putting this right here in place is going to confuse people in Waverly. I just feel like we really need to just say, what the governor says goes, that's what we're doing because that's what the businesses are doing. And if we, I don't want to confuse them and I don't want to try to keep updating everything. I think that we just need to keep doing what we're doing and agree with, okay, we, we got to do what the state says. And this is going to be really confusing if we have to try to keep up with all these new updates and proclamations and, and everything. So I, I guess I'm going to be done talking about it.
Well, the first thing I, I'd like to point out is I think there are certain things that Matt said that are just factually wrong. If you're looking at cases in the last seven days per 100,000, North Dakota has the most in the United States at 160. Iowa was all the way down at number seven at 114. Illinois is at 97. So, I mean, if you're just looking at numbers, those states that have lesser restrictive policies are having more outbreaks per 100,000. And that's just, you know, the numbers that I looked up right now. So I don't know, you know, what the numbers were like a month ago, but certainly right now, those states that have fewer policies regarding mask wearing and social distancing are the ones that are being hit the hardest with just raw numbers. The other thing that I really want to point out is when we talk about the economic impact of mask policies, I think you really need to think back to similar public health issues, specifically the issue of non-smoking in bars. So if you remember when smoking was allowed in bars, most of the bar owners would comment on how any kind of a non-smoking policy would kill their business. All those bars, you know, all the people in the bars were smoking. If you didn't allow smoking in bars, all of that business would go away and they'd go out of business. And this was the concern for many, many years. And in the end, what happened was those non-smoking policies were forced through. And suddenly there are all of these people who are avoiding bars because they were smoke-filled and impossible to breathe and have a conversation. And their business actually went up when they disallowed smoking. I have spoken with many people living in Waverly who do not feel comfortable shopping in Waverly because we do not have a mask mandate. I know many Waverly residents who drive to Cedar Falls to do their shopping there because they feel safer. Now, Cedar Falls still has problems with our mask mandate. There are lots of people who still don't wear masks. But the difference is if you're in Cedar Falls and someone is not wearing a mask, you can talk to the store clerk and say, you know, can you have this person wear a mask? You can talk to the sales staff and they will wear masks. I was contacted by a Waverly resident who was at the Neighborhood Closet, shopping for a recliner. And she realized that no one was wearing a mask. She asked one of the sales clerks to put on a mask and she was informed that it's not required. So this individual left without buying a recliner. Okay. I am concerned about the economic impact on Waverly of not having a mask policy. I think it is doing us economic damage that we are losing business to Cedar Falls and other communities that have mask mandates by not having one. So while you can talk about, you know, our concern about what this is going to do closing bars at 12:01, I think there's a lot of business that we are losing because we are not enforcing a mask mandate. I agree with other people that I've heard. I would love to see a stronger resolution than this, but I can certainly get behind this as a first step.
So is there something saying that we are, there are specific numbers that people were losing business because of this? I can see going both ways. I could see saying, okay, there's certain people that are not going to shop at certain stores because there's a mask mandate. And there, I could see people saying, I'm not going to shop at certain stores because there's not a mask mandate. So I can see, Brian, both ways, really. So, and it probably is equal amounts both ways. So not just one way or the other, it's probably equal amounts both ways. I see a couple problems in here. I, with, these numbers are going to change. I also don't feel comfortable saying, it says, spread of this dangerous disease. I would rather rewrite that and said, spread of COVID-19. I want to call it what it is. So, but there's a, I, I'm not sure we should put these numbers in here, tested positives over 700. I don't think we should put in here the 12, you know, at least 12 people have died since this. I don't think we should put any of that in, in a resolution. And I certainly don't think we need to say it's, this dangerous disease. I think we need to write COVID-19 if you, if we are going to write this.
Why should we not call it a dangerous disease when it is one? I mean, people who...
Professionally, I think that we should, if we're going to, we need to call it what it is.
It is a dangerous disease. I mean, people are
Sure, it is.
... who might be dead otherwise.
It can, it can be. So is influenza.
This is much more dangerous than influenza. If you look at the state rates of death from the flu versus state death rates right now in places like the Dakotas, much more significant with COVID.
Because influenza is contact, contact and droplets. And when you wear a mask and wash your hands, it decreases the amount of influenza. We have, we're probably, I think we're, we were almost like the highest rate of influenza. And, but yet our influenza rate is down from last year. So if you go and look on that data, week 44, I think we were way down on influenza. But we were, Iowa, I think, was one of the hotspots for influenza, even though we were, we're way better than what we were last year, the same week, week 44 in the year. And I think we're way under an influenza because we're wearing masks and washing our hands and people are doing those things. Personally, I think people should wear a mask every flu season if there's somebody sick in their house and they're going out into the public because they could spread it. That's my personal opinion. So I, I'm not against, against wearing a mask. I am, however, concerned that if we do this, we're going to be up here, we should be up here every two days updating this, just as Kim Reynolds updates it every two days because we're going to be behind. Like I said, this one is already behind. I think we, there's even a new resolution on the 18th. So this one's, I don't even think this is up to date.
Brian, that's really unprofessional for you to bring my business into the council meeting. Please stop doing that. First of all, you got the name of the business wrong. Neighborhood Closet was closed by the road diet. So there's that. And our policy is to follow the CDC recommendations. I think that should be the policy of the city as well.
I also want to give Mr. Cangis and Mr. Glazer an opportunity to chime in here. I see Tim unmuted himself, so we'll move over to you, sir.
I wanted to, yeah, I wanted to kind of draw and, or pull Bill into this conversation just a little bit because there's a few things on this that concern me, as have other, as I've noted in other things that we've done in the past, is enforcement is always an issue. That's, that to me, I really cringe at the idea of trying to pass anything that we can't really enforce. What is the enforcement mechanism behind this? Are we going to have police going into businesses and bars and restaurants and going into places to make sure that there aren't 15 people or more, or 16 person gathering in a place or anything like that? That's just, I, I think our resources are better used elsewhere. In addition, I am, you know, versed a little bit in the Constitution enough to be maybe dangerous in that sense, with the whole idea of the First Amendment and the right to peaceably assemble. And now we're telling people you can't. I have a problem with that. I know Heather's mentioned, you know, do what the government tells you to do. And I personally cringe when anybody just tells me, hey, government told you to do it, do it. That to me is, is reason to start raising question marks, period, anybody, any government telling that kind of sense. I think, and words that she used initially differ from what the resolution says, you know, she words that she used initially uh differ from what the resolution says. You know, she used the word recommend wearing a face mask and recommend uh washing your hands and things like that. And I think that fully I can get behind council recommending us do these things. But to mandate, to dictate, to tell uh the people that you have to do this, um, to me, that is going a little bit further than a free and open society type of, of a, a process to me and, and really is concerning uh that we get to that level. Certainly businesses have the ability to request customers wear masks, and if they don't wanna wear a mask, they can be asked to leave. Uh, if they don't wanna leave, then they can be called for trespassing. That's a, that's in there. The same idea with, you know, no pants, no shoes, no servants, uh, no shirts, no shoes, no pants. Anyway, uh, the whole idea with those kind of things, you know, businesses have the right to, to put their own restrictions in place. I just have a real issue with government stepping in and telling people that you have to do this. Um, recommending, getting the information out there, uh, encouraging, um, all of those things are definite, and I fully stand behind all that. Um, certainly in uh public spaces where we control the build, buildings, we have the ability. I did not have a problem with, you know, saying that within our public facilities, uh, that we are protecting our own workers, but also the public coming in. That is within our control. That's what we control. But to mandate people in private businesses, in private homes, in churches, uh synagogues, mosques, any place of worship, um, I think we're stepping a little bit further than uh what their constitutional bounds really are.
If I could, if I could just respond to that, just a moment. I think you're misreading the resolution. If you look at what we're resolving, we're, we're not mandating that anyone wear masks. Um, what we're doing is we're requesting people to comply with the governor's proclamation. Uh, and that's all we're doing here. So we're, we're not doing any mandating. We're not shutting people down at ten o'clock. What we're doing is we're requesting that people follow the, the governor's proclamation. And the words that are in the resolution are the exact words in the governor's proclamation. So-
So the third whereas, where it says requiring the wearing of masks or their face covering is we're not requiring?
The, the, the governor's proclamation is that's being required. And, and I, I suppose you could bootstrap that and say, well, because the governor is requiring it, and we're saying we support the governor's proclamation, that we're requiring it. Um, but basically what this is, is simply a, a resolution that we are supporting the efforts that the governor is taking, and we're requesting, not mandating, but requesting that people follow the governor's recommendation. So there is no enforcement in here. There's no enforcement mechanism because there's nothing to enforce. We're simply passing a resolution requesting that people in Waverly follow the recommendations of the governor. Now, as far as, um, as Heather's comment that the government, the governor can change her proclamations, and uh I'm not aware that she has, but if she has, that might be, uh, that might be true. I mean, that can easily be, be uh corrected by simply in, in the uh, the, the resolution, the resolved part, in the second paragraph, where it's saying, um, uh, the city of Waverly, we are requested to comply with the governor's proclamation, that we can just put an S on the end of that. We're required, or um, that we are requesting people comply with the governor's proclamations. So whatever the governor proclaims, we're requesting that people abide by those proclamations. I don't think that's asking too much. The, the alternative is that we'll pass a resolution that says we don't want people to abide by the governor's proclamations. You know, and I, I, I personally think that the governor probably should have gone a little bit farther in what she did to get a handle on this. I don't think we have the authority as a city council to actually do anything at this point. Um, you know, we certainly don't have the authority to have a mask mandate, um, because that's, uh, the governor's made it very clear that she's the only person that can issue those kinds of proclamations. So the, um, uh, all this proclamation is doing is saying, we support the efforts of the governor, and if the governor makes a proclamation, we're requesting the people in the city of Waverly, uh, follow the governor's proclamation. And, and, and that's all we're doing here. Uh, we've had, I've had a lot of people who've said, but why aren't you people doing something? Why isn't the city doing something? And this is an effort to at least make the people know that their city government is concerned about them, and we want them to, at a minimum, do what the governor is asking them to do.
I, I guess I'm confused then. If, we, can't we just simply say, hey, we support what the governor says and do it other? Well, you know, I mean, we're, we have, there's a lot of different things in here, and it's pretty specific, and it's gonna be confusing, I think. I think we need to keep it simple and say, then we need, we're following Governor Reynolds', you know, idea.
Yeah, I would agree with Heather. I mean, she has, there has been a new proclamation as of the eighteenth. So the resolution, this resolution mentions the sixteenth proclamation, so there's already been another one since then. Um, so it's hard to get into, you know, how do we have a moving target if it keeps changing on us? I'd rather be more generic with the idea of encouraging and recommending along those. I, I would be, I would be supportive of, of using the terminology of encouraging and recommending.
All right, then let, let's do this so we can get this moving and, and we can have a vote and we can all go home. Um, let's take all the whereas's out, uh, except perhaps the very first one. Um, and take the other one, two, three, four, whereas is out, and have now therefore be it resolved that all persons within the limits of the city of Waverly are requested to comply with the governor's proclamations with an S to aid in reducing the spread of this dangerous disease. And if that requires a, a, uh, I think that would probably require a motion. So I am, I am making that as a motion.
I, I would.
Would this in essence override, you know, what, what we already have in place, are you thinking, Rod? You know, so, cause basically this, this is what the city's doing, and then if she changes it, either, either she goes stricter or looser, then we ride with that. I can almost agree with that.
Well, the city, the city has a, a, uh, I mean, we have passed and we have repassed every month a resolution that people are required to wear masks indoors on city property. Um, I, I don't, that's a totally different issue here. What we are uh doing here is simply um encouraging people, requesting that people comply with the uh, the governor's proclamations. They're still gonna have to wear a mask when they're inside city property, inside city hall, the, the, um, you know, the, the, our policy is that people have to wear masks. I don't think that's gonna change.
I wanna give Chris an opportunity here, i- if he wants to, to partake in the conversation that required, but uh, everybody else has had an opportunity, and then I would, I would like to um have just a moment, too.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I don't really have uh any words of wisdom to add to all of the opinions that's been offered. Um, I do support, um, you know, as leaders protecting, trying to help protect uh those citizens that we are, that elected us to this position. I think that masks are a good thing. I think being safe is a good thing. Um, so, but I don't have any, anything um earth-shattering to add to all of the opinions.
All right, thank you. Uh, one compromise, Rod, that I, that I would have with this, and, and I love the idea of the, the striking of the whereas's that you identified. Um, it really makes it appear more like a proclamation than a resolution or an ordinance. It's an encouragement. Um, and, you know, with that, I, there's probably not a way to amend anything of the sort without having another meeting between now and the next meeting or whatever, and with uh meetings regulations, chapter twenty-one, the earliest we could do it, it would really be Wednesday uh evening, but uh be a one, one-time thing for Carla to draft up a proclamation. The council can approve it, that we, you know, going all the way back to March, you know, James can, can agree with this and, and Bill as well, and I think Carla, um, that the, the stance that I had was that we wanted to adhere to the governor's proclamations. We wanted to adhere to the county, the state, the federal, the international guidance that we get for the best possible outcome with this. And I think that's what this is really alluding to. Correct me if I'm wrong, Rod, that, that, that's what we want to do, is follow the guidance. We wanna encourage people to follow the guidance. Um, it makes no difference to me if this is amended to something different. Um, I just know that some people may see that using a resolution as a platform where I think a, a proclamation might be possibly better suited for that, just as a, a, um, a, another option, just throwing it out there.
I guess I would like to hear from Bill what the difference is between a resolution and a proclamation.
I don't think in this case it makes any difference. You have a governor who's in a time of emergency, uh, made a proclamation, and in addition, has made recommendations to, to, to the people of, of the state. Um, her proclamation in, in the effect that it, it has mandates is the force of law. And really what your resolution says is that we support her power to do that, and we support her, her proclamation as a law that we should all follow. But I think to that extent, whether it's a proclamation or a resolution, it's the same message.
I guess my comment on that, uh, Mr. Mayor, would be that the resolution tends to be coming more from the council, and the proclamation is something that is really more, that's generated by the mayor and then approved by the council. I think in this situation, since this was brought up by the council, I think it's absolutely appropriate that we pass this as a resolution. Um, I, uh, you know, I, I do have my amending motion on the floor, so if somebody would second that, we could vote on whether we want to amend the resolution, and then we can vote on the resolution either in its original form or as amended.
I'll second it.
I would like to ask Rod if you would be willing to amend the amendment from the requesting to using the terms recommend and encourage?
Artin.
I, I, I think the idea is we're recommending that these were, were, were in support of the government, governor's issuance and, and guidance, and we're encouraging people to follow it. I, I don't, I just, I, the terminology to me, I, I kinda like just-
I, 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 I think that, um, yeah, um, encouraged, I think, would be uh, uh, an acceptable alternative. I don't think recommended, but encouraged, I could, uh, I could live with that. So if it's all right with Anne with your second, could we amend the resolution, amend the amending resolution in exchange, uh, um, encouraged to requested?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're splitting hairs. I, I don't think there's much difference between recommending and requesting, you know, but uh, I think encouraged, you know, I, I will, if it will get us done with this, I will support encouraged.
So I wanna be clear, you're getting rid of all the, the second, third, fourth, and fifth whereas's in this motion, is that correct?
That's correct.
All but the first.
All but the first. Um, I don't know, I think the second, fourth, and fifth whereas's still belong in there. I mean, if you wanna get rid of the third whereas, because that has a date on it, and you know, maybe it's, we're gonna have to, you know, obligated to pass a new resolution every time the governor issues a proclamation, I can get behind getting rid of the third whereas, but I don't think there's any argument that, you know, over seven hundred citizens of Brammer County have been tested positive for COVID, and at least twelve Brammer County citizens have died from the disease. I don't think that's a controversial statement because I think it's a fact. Um, I think it's true that the city of, the people of Waverly have pride in ourselves, our commitment to protect and aid our neighbors. I don't think that's a controversial statement. If you want to strike the third whereas, I don't have a problem with that. But striking number two, four, and five, I think that you're trying to um remove any uh content from this resolution.
Well, as it stands right now, we have the first amendment to the resolution, I believe from the conversation between Mr. Drinko and Mr. Raffi, the amendment to the amendment was made towards encourage, or encouraged to comply with the governor's proclamation. That's currently where we stand right now, and that would include the striking of the second, third, fourth, and fifth, all but the first whereas in the resolution. So that's where we currently are.
That's where we stand, yeah.
You need a second?
We do have that with, with-
Is there an amendment?
Correct.
I, I hear what you're saying, Brian, and, and I, I don't completely disagree with that, but I think that at this point, the most important thing is that we pass the resolution and, and move this on so that people know, uh, you know, we're, that, that we support people doing things to, to prevent the spread of COVID. So uh, the actual wording of the resolutions and, and, and the wording of the whereas's as to why we're doing it, um, will hopefully be self-evident to most people.
Uh, point of order, um, this was, and, and correct me maybe if I'm wrong, 'cause I, I remember we talked about this last meeting, that we were gonna have this on the agenda to study it as part of a study session, but it's now like regular business, but we didn't approve a meeting. So I, I, and I don't know the procedure on that, Carla, or if I'm even, maybe I missed something, too. I don't know.
So we, you, you better. Okay, so, um, this is actually procedural in the fact that we did have two, possibly three council members that suggested that it be on the agenda. We did talk about it being on the study session. However, we talked about it being on the study session, um, possibly as a resolution. So I think that it was, it, it is according to procedures, and it's also according to our municipal code.
Okay, very good. I just wanted to be clear on that.
So who was it that, Rod, and more than just Rod, who else was it that wanted this?
Well, I recall there was discussion at the last meeting about concern that we wouldn't be meeting again until December, and that given that cases were rising and people are expressing concern, um, I think there were more than one of us who said that, um, it would be agreeable to discuss it at this next meeting, to have it at the study session. But I can't remember who exactly did that.
I believe it was Rod, Anne, and myself.
I think this discussion is sort of a microcosm of the discussion that has happened nationally, and is why so many people are confused about, um, you know, the, the varying messages that come down from the federal, the state, the local, city, county jurisdictions, because there's not been a cohesive message. Uh, and I think that's partly why people are very confused about what they're supposed to be doing, and frankly, about why it's become so politicized. And I think that if you talk to healthcare professionals, uh, most of them are a bit astounded that we'd even be arguing about this, because it's fairly common sense that, that if you're in an indoor space, um, you should try to socially distance or, uh, wear a mask. If you're, um, in a large gathering outdoors, you ought to be wearing a mask. You ought to be washing your hands. I mean, these are things that, um, are really not debated, um, in hospitals and clinics, uh, these days, or long-term care facilities, because they make sense and they protect people from infection. Um, and the mixed messages that, that we're putting out there- Um, and the mixed messages that, that we're putting out there tonight as a council are exactly why people are, are confused. And that breeds more anxiety and, and, uh, disorientation about what people are supposed to do.
I agree that there has been a lot of different messages. Um, and people do need to be doing the same thing. And, um, that's why, you know, I'm concerned, uh, about the specifics of this and saying that, you know, and, and saying, well, we need to follow what the governor is saying. Some people might not say that she's, nobody's debating that you should wear a mask, wash your hands or anything like that. I think all of us agree with that. However, I think the, the concern here is, uh, you know, the, the wording, um, in here and that, you know, we should follow the governor's recommendations. And, um, there's frequent changes by her, um, every single day because this is ever-changing. Everything has been fluid. So like I said, unless I, I don't feel comfortable voting with it for this, because this isn't even the i- i- an updated version. Um, and I just want something very fluid, I guess, if I'm gonna, um, vote on something. Because there are frequent changes and nobody disagrees that washing their hands and staying home when you're sick and, you know, putting a mask on if you can. And, and stuff like that, nobody disagrees with that. I, I think majority of people agree with that. That's not the, the question here. The, the concern is more of the, uh, specific nature of this, and we should just follow what the governor's saying. A- a- and it's more confusing, especially like I, I can compare like the fireworks thing. The state has one and then every single city has something different. It's so confusing and nobody knows what the laws and it's not really enforceable. So that's my concern, not, I'm not debating whether we should be washing our hands or wearing a mask.
Let me ask you this, um, Heather. It almost sounds like you would be in favor of a amendment to the amended amended resolution. To basically in the very first line of that resolution, just state a resolution supportive of Governor Reynolds' proclamations regarding COVID-19 period. That, that way it doesn't, it isn't tied to that one proclamation. Is that?
That would be helpful, but I.
That would go back to.
I thought that's what the amendment did.
What's that?
It to proclamations. Didn't the amendment change it to proclamations?
The mayor's talking about the introductory part. And I, I, you, you are absolutely correct. The, uh, that, that last section dated November 16, 2020 should not be in there if we're going to make it more generic. So, um, I don't know.
Want to add that Rod and back it up?
Let's, let's add that into the mix, yes. So what we have now, uh, let me make sure that I can summarize this. Resolution in support of Governor Reynolds' proclamation regarding COVID-19. Whereas the state of Iowa, Bremmer County and the city of Waverly have experienced significant increases in COVID-19 infections due to the novel, novel coronavirus. Uh, now therefore be it resolved that all persons within the limits of the city of Waverly are encouraged to comply with the governor's proclamations to aid in reducing the spread of this dangerous disease.
The only change I'd have is, uh, pluralizing proclamation at the very top again.
All right, yes.
So that was the only thing that I caught, not trying to.
Good catch, good catch.
So that would fall to you, Ann, or, or anybody technically, but.
To accept that as an amendment?
Correct.
Amendment?
Is the newest amendment.
For your second.
Okay, that's fine with me.
Okay.
And can we call the question?
I will call the vote to call the question. All in favor, say aye.
It has to be seconded, I think.
I'll second calling the question.
Stand, stand by, I need a, I need a voice vote for the amendment first before we can call the question.
Uh, I thought she was calling the question on the amendment.
That's what I was calling the question.
Correct, yes, thank you. Okay, all in favor of the amendment as read by Mr. Drinko, say aye.
Are, 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 wait, are we, point of order, are we supposed to have a voice vote on calling the question?
I think it has to have a second.
Technically, yes, okay.
I, I second calling the question. But we need to have a voice vote on calling the question.
Correct, so. Voice vote in favor of calling the question on the amended resolution 20 dash 179 is read by Mr. Drinko. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, the same sign. That carries. Now forward with calling the question, or are we having discussion, further discussion on the amended resolution?
We have to approve the amendment first.
Yes, questions uncalled, so the vote goes next.
Correct, but that we.
On the amendment.
Correct, so all in favor of the amendment as read by Mr. Drinko on resolution 20 dash 179. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign?
No.
Motion carries. Any discussion on the amended resolution at this point?
Uh, there was one thing that someone brought up that I kind of wanted to respond to. I do think that some kind of a mask mandate gives our local companies, um, I'm gonna call it political cover. If, uh, if a business owner is trying to enforce their own mask mandate, there's a good chance that they will face, um, blowback from consumers. So if I am a business owner and I'm trying to enforce a mandate and I say, we have a mandate in our store. There are lots of examples of, um, being faced with angry clientele who are, why do you have a mask mandate? If we as a city have a mask mandate, it gives those business owners the opportunity to say, I'm on your side, but the city says I have to do this. I know that there are a lot of business owners who keep quiet about city issues because it's bad for business. They stay out of political discussions. Lots of business owners said, I'm not taking a stand on the three-lane, four-lane thing, because it's only gonna hurt my business. And I think this kind of a mask mandate is the same thing. They might approve of it, but there's no way they're gonna come out in public because of the blowback and the impact it will have on their business. I know that if you go down to Cedar Falls, there are signs on the stores saying mask mandate. And how strictly they enforce it is kind of up to them, but they've got the sign proclaiming the mask mandate. I do feel like we are doing our businesses a favor if we give them someone to blame for requiring masks. And if, if people are angry at me because they have to wear masks and they don't vote me back in the office, I'm okay with that. And it keeps our companies, if it keeps our stores in business. I would rather be the one who gets blamed for that than companies going out of business because people are angry at them and in the aftermath of this whole thing. So I would be happy to take the blame to help our store owners, um, maintain a mask policy.
I believe that would be a separate resolution matter to take up.
That was kind of in response to something I think Tim was saying about store owners having the ability to enforce their own mask mandates. So I'm, I'm thinking that we're, we, we do our business owners a favor by having a uniform policy and not forcing them to be the heavies. And I agree, this is not what this, what this, um, resolution is about.
Big brother is watching, so you do what big brother tells us.
I think we've possibly exhausted the conversation on this and we have a resolution ready for a vote. I would like to go ahead and call for a roll call vote on resolution 20 dash 179 as amended.
Mr. Mayor, could Carla read it please so that we can hear it in its final form?
Would you like me to, Carla, or you can either way?
Sure, so I have a resolution in support of Governor Reynolds' proclamations regarding COVID-19. Whereas the state of Iowa, Bremmer County and the city of Waverly have experienced significant in- increases in COVID-19 infections due to the novel coronavirus. And, uh, it goes now therefore be it resolved that all persons within the limits of the city of Waverly are requested to comply with, excuse me, encouraged to comply with the governor's proclamation, plural, to a- aid in reducing the spread of this dangerous disease.
Hearing no questions, roll call, Carla.
Oh, four.
No.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Kengas.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Schneider.
No.
On a vote of five to two, zero absent, the amended resolution is read by the city clerk. 2179 is approved. Section F, staff updates, Mr. Broner.
Absolutely none tonight, sir. That move we adjourn.
But she had that authority, sir. Move on to city council comments. I'm gonna start with, uh, Mr. Drinkow is on my top.
Well, this was fun. Yeah, I, I have no comments tonight, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Raffi, you're up next.
Nothing for me, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Bergen.
I wanted to recognize two individuals, uh, Mathias Lechi and Isaac Bergen of Troop 69, who passed their Eagle Bor, their Eagle Scout Border Review this past Thursday. So we have two new Eagle Scouts in the city of Waverly and I wanted to recognize them on that impressive achievement.
Excellent, thank you very much. Mr. Glazer.
I just wanted to do a shout out to the city of Waverly and city Waverly staff for the Fourth Street, um, reconstruction project. It is very, very nice, thank you very much.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Schneider.
You know, Thanksgiving this week, um, every single one of us is gonna have food on the table. But because of this rotten COVID policy, there's worldwide hunger that we are creating with this policy. That doesn't mean I don't want to keep my community safe. I have a friend in Italy, Augustino, he's got a shop. Sales are down 95% in this shop. He's got tenants, none of them can pay rent. There will be hunger in Italy. Read what's going on in Africa or ha, or look at what's going on in the Philippines. We are creating hunger with this, this policy. Now, that, that's all I'm gonna say is that, that we, we have to stop being monomaniacal with our approach. To reduce cases is a cost and we have to understand what that cost is and we don't. I asked that we study that tonight and we talk about the tests and the numbers so we understand it. Instead, we hand it over to the governor. Oh, the governor, we'll, we'll talk a lot about the governor in the future, but, cause this is, um, I'm not happy about this at all. Not happy at all.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Bowfer.
I just wanna, um, I just wanna recognize the healthcare workers, um, not just nurses and doctors, but, you know, lab techs, radiology, uh, respiratory therapist, um, right now. Are heroes right now. And they are definitely calling for our help. Specific regions maybe are calling for more help than others right now. Iowa is not doing very well, um, you know, with the healthcare, uh, facilities. You know, they're, some might be full, but it is, it is a, a season typically where hospitals are busy. Um, and then we have coronavirus, um, things going on on top of that, which strains, uh, our facilities even, even more. Uh, I know everybody, we're going into Thanksgiving, um, and, and nobody, we can't tell anybody what to do. I can't say you should stay home, not go anywhere. You should be safe if you're gonna go do something because, um, who knows? Who knows what's gonna happen? And my suggestion to you is if, if you do gather, um, please, please take into consideration somebody else's health. Don't go anywhere if you are sick or even have a little cough or a little cold. Wear a mask if there's groups of people, large groups of people. And, and people, the fact is, people are gonna gather and there's gonna be consequences for large gatherings, um, and, you know, some might be s- not very sick and, and some might get very sick. And we just don't know right now. And I'm not trying to scare anybody, I'm not trying to put out scare tactics. I truly believe that the healthcare field is strained right now. Some certain regions, maybe not all of them, but, um, the health career, a, a lot of these people are asking for our help. And, you know, if, if people were, if we were at war somewhere and our military troops were asking for help, I would say, you know, we need to give them some help. We need to send more troops over or we need to do our part. Um, and that's exactly what I'm gonna ask everybody to do is just do your part. Um, and, and some people maybe aren't doing it and they're meeting anyway and they're, um, maybe not taking those precautions. So if you do want to meet, please just, you know, wash your hands, don't go anywhere if you, don't meet with anybody if you feel a little sick at all. Wear a mask if you, you know, are gathering. So, um, we can't tell anybody not to, but please do what you need to to stay healthy.
Thank you, Mr. Yanda, our guest councilman. Do you have any final parting comments for your last meeting?
Just wanna thank you again, Adam, for the chance to be on the council meetings. Keep up the good work.
Well, appreciate you being with us, thank you very much. Mr. Kengas, Mayor Protem.
I don't know, probably can steal the mayor's thunder, but, uh, as we're talking about small businesses and, and local businesses, this is a, a traditional start of the shopping season. And traditionally, this Saturday has been Small Business Saturday, uh, shop locally. Our businesses could use the patronage, um, and would encourage people to support our local businesses as much as they can. On another note, um, maybe I'm stepping into Dr. Raffi's territory a little bit with this, but, um, this is also a season, um, where people, you know, have traditionally gone through rough periods. And as a nation, the whole year has been a rough period. And as we continue with some isolation, which is for the good of everyone, I would encourage people to reach out to friends and neighbors, family members. Touch base with them, be there for them, make sure things are okay. They may put on a smiley face when things are a lot rougher than it seems. Be there for each other, be thankful for each other. when things are a lot rougher than it seems. Be there for each other, be thankful for each other. Some people may know that I went through a pretty dark time about a year ago. Um, and I'm thankful that I'm here still. And I just would encourage everyone to reach out and love each other, and be supportive of each other, and just be thankful that we live in a great country, and we're gonna get through this.
Thank you very much, sir. Uh, you didn't steal my thunder. Um, I'll let you run with that one. Shortens up my piece. Um, just, I do have a few things here, and I don't want to take up too much time. Um, number one thing is, is we've got some openings in the next calendar year, some as soon as next month, and in, uh, January, uh, boards and commissions, uh, get your applications in if you're interested in serving. Um, another item is the Red Fox Inn reconstruction, um, process is, is underway. The developers have wanted to, you know, keep the community engaged with what is going on out there, uh, keep them apprised to the, the progress. So they did create a, a Facebook page, um, where they're gonna continue to, um, showcase some photos of the progress. Uh, just, there is a community investment there with the development agreement that we have with them, so they just wanted to have some transparency. So check that out, follow along. I want to thank, uh, everybody that had a piece in the Christmas or holiday beautification throughout, you know, the town, getting the garland up, the lights up, and all that wonderful stuff that really, uh, makes our, our, uh, community sparkle. Um, trash, obviously, this week, um, we're moving trash collection on Thursday, um, back to Wednesday, and Friday's collection route will be picked up on Monday. So that's the adjustment there. And the last thing, as I call for motion to adjourn, is Happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
I'll second James's motion to adjourn.
I'll second the second.
Excellent. Motion made, Kengas seconded by Schneider. All in favor, say aye? Opposed, the same sign, we adjourn. Thank you very much, everyone.